Ready to start?
Yes.
We're going to move on to the item of on budget and Deborah or Susie are going to help us.
I'm Susie Halgen and she's going to give us an update on the structural deficit.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so you all have this spreadsheet and it was actually the same spreadsheet that you last saw at the first budget hearing back in October. And all I did is updated personal information. So the everything below the adjusted annual balance with changes through 10, 20, and 2015 is new. And so those are the items that I'll go over briefly. So starting with revenues, the first line is property tax. And you see a big number there, almost $800,000, which is wonderful. As you probably recall, we adopted the property, you all adopted the property tax ordinance and had to turn around and do it again and amend it because we got some late-breaking information out of the assessor's office that indicated that we were going to get a substantial refund levy. And they were also able to incorporate additional new construction, primarily from the Boeing project, earlier than we anticipated. And so what that means is that we will be able to amend the budget for 2016 for additional mandates, which is very good news. You'll notice that I have it strung it out into the out years to show impact. And the reason for that is that the refund levy is only a one-year impact and then it goes away. And that's about a little over $300,000. And then the additional new construction, we really already had in the out years, so it's more of a timing difference of when that revenue come. And so that won't really impact our loan, we'll just be recalibrating in the out years. So that's some good news. The next slide item is BNO tax. And we are proposing to add a public disclosure coordinator for the city clerk's office. What has been happening is that the clerk's office is being frankly overwhelmed with budget, public disclosure requests. And they are the central administrative point in the city for, to manage and administer those requests. And it really is consuming almost 100% of our deputy city clerk Anna Fitch's time. And of course, as we had reorganized finance, Anna had been working on BNO tax up in accounting and achieving some pretty impressive results and improved compliance. And so that has basically dried up when we moved her down to the clerk's office because the public disclosure activity has just gotten incredibly enormous. And so we're proposing to add a public disclosure coordinator, which will free Anna to then return to the compliance work that she needs to be doing. And so we certainly anticipate an offset for the additional cost for the coordinator and I'm sure will probably exceed what I have here. All we forecasted is enough to offset the new position, but I feel and I'm sure Sharon would agree with me that we'll be able to far exceed that estimate. The next thing is, is there's a proposal to add building security to the Wall Street Building. And this would be a professional services contract with an outside agency so the city wouldn't have staffing issues associated with it. We have received proposals back on that. And these numbers are based on that. So we're looking at an additional $47,000 and growing a year for that additional security and then about $5,000 per startup cost to build an area in the lobby for this person to be. In addition to that, we have, are proposing a graphic artist for public information, professional services, about $5,000 a year. And then we're going to be, as you know, we have moved to Civic Plus as our website, our external website platform. And the plan is to also move our intranet site, which is the city employee website, to the same platform, so it'll all be on the same. And so that looks like about $33,000 for this year. And that is all I have.
So Susie, why don't you go ahead and focus on where we are?
Okay, so at this point, based on these additions, we're looking at a little over half a million dollar surplus for 2016. We still have projected deficits going forward, starting at 6.7 in 2017 and moving to about 16.2 million in 2020. So there's still are significant challenges ahead and it'll take constant work, you know, to look at that. Also, we'll be doing our year-end wrap-up for you all for the 2015 financial results. And we're looking to do that rather than the beginning of March. And so we'll be bringing forward what our carry forward will be. It's very early, our books are not anywhere near closed yet, there's still limits to accruals and there's going to be a lot of reappropriations. But because we had significant construction activity over and above expectations and BNO tax also came in quite well, we are going to be looking at, it's possible that we could have, this number will probably change, but even maybe $8 million after reappropriations to be able to use to balance the next year's budget and contribute towards capital or whatever council.
And also pensions.
Yeah. So.
I'm sorry, what was the last part about the pensions?
Pretty many towards the pensions goes to balancing the next year's budget. So.
It's the pre-fund.
Right. So there will be, you know, this is an extraordinary year. There will be frankly significant dollars for consideration on the carry forward. More to come on that.
Sounds like opportunity.
It's in a one-time sort of way. I mean, this is a very extraordinary year.
Yeah. And what of course is always interesting is, and this gets to that next topic, but the 1% property tax, you know, when, as we all know, when you have roughly a third of your budget that is capped at a 1% increase per year, you end up with this sort of deficit problem that just continues because the other two-thirds of it doesn't, the increases in the other two-thirds don't make up for the cap on the one-third that is capped. And so it's just an ongoing challenge that we have to address as we move forward.
Great. Why don't we check and see if there are questions on this or observations that people need to make and then we'll move on to the 1%. So do you have questions or comments?
What is the nature of the security? Is it just a person to be stationed in the Wall Street Building?
Correct. What we've done is we've put out an RFP and we're going to contract with a security firm so that we don't have to incur all of those overhead costs. And it looks as though the cost is about $47,000 a year to start. And the nature of it will be that we'll have something built on the first floor of the Wall Street Building. There'll be a phone, probably a computer. We'll lock down the elevators so that when somebody comes in, what they'll have to do is they'll check in and then a phone call will be made to the person that they're asking to see, to find out if they have an appointment or they're expecting them. And then they have the security person either let them into the elevator or will have to come down and get the person out of the lobby. So it's still going to be vulnerable.
We've had some security breaches in the prosecutor's office.
And then we get involved.
It's created a fair amount of employee concern. We're looking at all of our assets, all of our buildings. This one, we feel most vulnerable about, so.
I just have one little request. On the ninth floor, when it's after five o'clock, it'd be nice to have a light, one light by the elevator. Because I cannot see, I mean, I'm guessing how to get down the elevator.
I'll make a note.
I pushed the up button by mistake a couple times.
Okay. So we've noted we're going to get a light by the dark elevator.
I thought I'd written down.
Moving on, Jeff.
I'm just trying to keep this in alignment. It seems as though our decisions a year or so ago to modify how we do our BNO tax, to have an annual tax to pursue those that maybe weren't needed before along with rates and fees sort of creates a surplus. So how much of this $8 million, which we hope will carry us forward for a while, is a result of that one-time increase? Because once we get that revenue decrease, it's not going to grow as it did when we made the policy change.
Right, well, most significantly is probably on the sales tax side with the new construction. You know, even though we didn't get sales tax on the Boeing building, there's a lot of other things that you cannot see going on around town, which is really extraordinary. What I plan to do, this is a very good question, what I plan to do when I come back for the year-end wrap-up is I will break apart the carry board to all its various elements and give you some discussion on what generated each one of those elements so that you have a real clear understanding of where the city's going, you know, where we see the city going financially based on our current income and what we see in the future.
This is an important thing for us to consider since you mentioned one-time. And it's really important not to, I mean, we're sitting in the Public Safety Committee, you are listening, please, for additional investments. And you don't use one-time investments in that way to create a sustained complication. And I'm preaching to the choir, I just think it's important we put that on.
Sure. And I'll make sure that I try to detail things out in such a way so that you can really clearly see what the source was and what the implications are going forward.
Can we put a light down?
Would everyone just make a list and hand it to me at the end? Thank you.
Okay.
I just have one other request for Susie. When you do that business renewal license every year, if you could break out those that are under $5,000?
Sure.
That'd be great. Because I have had a couple really small, you know, home businesses that are, you know, that can be a little bit of a burden for them to renew every year. And I know some cities waive that for businesses under a certain level and it might be nice to see if we can do that.
Great, please.
I have a question and concern about the increase in the public disclosure requests. I mean, a lot of times this is a signal that, you know, we're either not interfacing with people the way that we should be or we've got people mad at us for some reason. So what's the nature of these?
It's one specific labor union in the city. I'll admit that.
And frankly, it runs the gamut. I mean, we get, Sharon, I mean, we get everything from people that are not happy with us for whatever reason. There is that huge issue the mayor spoke of, but people use us for commercial purposes, frankly. They want all these financial reports and data out of our financial system and they use that for their business. And, you know, they can get it for free because they require, we have to provide it electronically if that's how they ask for it. So commercial purposes, just your average everyday public disclosure request, it can be anything, but it's.
Like building plans.
Yeah.
That's daily.
I see a lot of that.
And it's all I can encourage.
This isn't just the city of evidence, it's everywhere in the state.
I just say, this is about explosive issue all across the state. Yes, definitely. And I'm actually going to make some notes. I'm going to have some discussions next week on this with the state folks. The example of the litigation we just solved, or our pay that we went through litigation process, those examples are why, and I don't want to digress here, but I just want you to know, these are great examples to take back and start to talk to our legislators because this is a statewide issue. Frankly, what we need is an adjudatory process where we can say, the garden variety, the citizen needs stuff, we're passing those through, that's not the issue. I have not seen that as an issue. People are getting the information that they're requesting. Then there are folks who are using it as a weapon or using it as a way to raise money. And the taxpayers are getting hit for this. And the example is that we're not putting the kind of energy into collecting our BNO taxes because we're diverting staff resources to answering not necessarily frivolous requests but requests that are not really intended to provide public information. They're intended to be abusive or a weapon. This thing is way out of hand and the key is to be able to separate the two so that the public is getting all the stuff they need because everyone agrees that. So I just wanted you to know, I'm taking that and it's the number one issue.
It also takes a real skilled person to do it because it's a great opportunity. If you don't respond to it by a basic stat, then you're in a very ridiculous situation and people are looking for you to stumble in the street. I brought in a substitute that didn't work, I brought in a paralegal, it still wasn't good enough, we're under scrutiny, I had to get some staff support. It's really bad.
And the public needs to see that their taxpayers are, their tax dollars are getting robbed, yet I just prosecute.
Yeah, I'd like, I mean, if we could get a report even at council or something, I mean, just so the public can see what's going on and the growth of this, I'd be curious to see that if you guys keep stats of those.
If you do, that's a great idea.
That's a great point.
That's a great idea.
The taxpayers begin to see what's happening here, I think they'd be incensed, but they're not seeing it. And they think that it's public information. It's abuse.
And maybe it comes forward when this comes forward.
And also it would be important if we think about looking at the volume of the requests. Sometimes it's not even the number of requests, but what the request is for. Everybody's email going back how many years or something and then you have to read that and all. And so it's about, you've got, you know, anyway.
So let me kind of pull us back here. Not that this is unimportant, I think it's very important. And I appreciate you wanting to talk about it. And thank you, Paul, for your input and you're going to be working on this. Is there anything more we need to say about this issue or are there questions about other items in this, in the budget?
Are we leaving the structural deficit? Are we done? Are you asking, are we done with that question?
Yeah. And then I'm going to go to the 1%. So I just, are there other questions or observations on this document?
I just have one for the structural deficit. I know that we postponed the police study. Do we have a timeline on that yet? Are we going to wait till we finish with this fire study?
And council member, you know, my thinking on this is that we've really gotten quite involved in the Fitch study and developing some sort of recommendations through council. And the other thing that's operating is that we've got, made really significant changes within the police department. So with the Streets Initiative, so we've got additional staffing, we've got a tremendous number of vacancies, which also means that they're not operating, that they're off. And so I'm very concerned about starting that study prematurely where we're not going to get a real good baseline.
Okay, so we'll just revisit it every so often.
The money is in the budget and I think that maybe we should revisit, a look at it at least by mid-year. And then we'll see how many vacancies they have. We're not going to get a good picture if we start too soon.
Okay, so it's really a timing issue.
Yeah. And I don't disagree with that, I guess just from my perspective. I do think we made a commitment, you know, through the S-staff process to do these studies and I know the commitment is there.
Yes.
So I just want to state that I think we all agree that this work does need to be done on the police department. It's a matter of timing and so I think we're all in agreement that we look at it later this year.
Yes, no, I guess so.
Well, I guess on the structural deficit, I would just question, when are we going to deal with some of the other recommendations that were dropped or were like the Parks District or we're doing a Parks Levy or, I mean, there was a list of things that we were going to look at and I don't think we've made it through all of them. So what's the plan for the rest of the items that were on that list that would help actually, I mean, we're talking about one-time changes in the budget, but we need to make permanent changes in the budget structure.
So I completely agree and as we've all said all along, this is not a once and done process. So my sense would be is that given what we see here now in the out years, we now need to dust off the list that we had last year.
Yes.
And we probably need to start that in the next few months as before we get into the 2017 budget process. And so.
2017 is upon us.
That may be something, that may be something that should be taken on in the Budget Committee in the next month or so is that we start looking at that list.
We'll let's see where we are.
Some of it's going to be driven however through this visioning process and setting priorities. Because I think, I want to get a sense of where the public is on a Parks District concept. You know, the other part is healthcare and we should have something to you all relatively soon. But we did get some reprieve from the federal government, they've actually moved the Cadillac Tax out by a couple of years. Frankly, I wonder whether it will ever occur. So we got a little bit of pressure relieved there, but we were looking at, we could look at more options in healthcare too, because that's a big one.
Well, and frankly, the Cadillac Tax move, I mean, sort of takes the heat off us and I think that that could work against us. Yeah. I mean, we really need to look at our benefits expense and explosion in that and we've got growth in that budget line is pretty astronomical.
So does that discussion go on a regular council meeting agenda or is that a subcommittee topic?
It's been a subcommittee and Brendan's been part of that. So we met with our agent the other day and we asked him to bring some options back, discuss review of council. So we should have that.
I know that he's working on it because I did have this discussion with Sharon on within the last couple of days. It's coming soon.
Great. So that'll go to the subcommittee?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to be sure so that when we write this up and report back, we know who gets to do what. Thank you.
Our procedures are that the council president can put something on the subcommittee or so.
Right. It makes sense to me that when that information comes back, that that would probably go to the Budget Subcommittee as part of this updated review of the S-Stat recommendations as we go into the 2017 cycle. So yes, I agree.
Great, okay, yes.
And I was under no misunderstanding that we were going to resolve the structural deficit today. But I would hope that.
Oh gee.
As we do look going forward, that we either take the work that was done or I think probably need to add to it so that we're looking at how other jurisdictions are structured and some other model. I know when we get to the Fitch study, we'll probably have some conversation on that. But I think that's probably also fair for some of the other departments and operations so that we're looking at, well, here's some other models and are there things that we could take from those that might inform and help us deal with our structure. So I just somewhere in that process would like that to get introduced.
Okay, great, thank you. Are we comfortable with this discussion of structural deficit update? Can we move on? Okay, so let's, let's open discussion around the 1% property tax limitation. Was somebody going to speak to that to sort of ground us in that?
I think ultimately that is a major part of our structural deficit. And I put it on there as a component of it, so I think it's one in the same terms of the topic that, you know, I'm wondering if it actually probably might come on because it seems like it shouldn't be forefront for all municipal organizations to provide a fair metric to assess property taxes that stays constant with the cost of living or implicit price deflator or some other mechanism. And I think we all know that this is an election year in Olympia, so people aren't going to touch it, but in terms of advocacy, I think that when we look at the long run at 1%, we're going to look at a pie chart where that forever will be in place until it at least maintains a portion of revenue that is consistent and then we can deal with these other needs. So until that limitation change, we will always have a structural deficit that turns the root cause.
I guess the only thing I would add is that that is recognized by cities and counties and there is kind of a discussion process going on with the legislatures. But this year as a legislative action, that's not going to happen. But I think the idea now is to try to tee up some kind of more serious discussion for 2017. Just the next requirement.
I, just from my own personal perspective, I understand why this law was put in place. I understand the desire to try to keep, you know, taxes in check, you know, as taxpayers, none of us want to see that just keep going up and up and up in a wave. But the problem with this is that when you have a 1% artificial limit and when the cost of living is 2% or 3% or 4% or whatever it might be, the pressure that builds along with all of the unfunded mandates that continue to come down on us, it's just, it's a squeeze that can't possibly be navigated in any responsible way. And so it just, it's sort of off-topic, but it would just be nice if somehow there could be a proposal brought back that rather than an artificial 1%, that the limit would be variable and it could be tied to some percentage of CPI or something so that there's still pressure to keep it down, but not just this artificial 1% number. Because taken to an extreme, if inflation were to head towards 10%, I mean, this just gets to be an unsustainable sort of a model to run the government with. But anyway, it's.
So just to be clear, you're right, if 1% is an artificial limitation, it has no relationship to our costs, as the mayor has correctly pointed out again and again. Unfunded mandates is an issue, but what hasn't been discussed here, so we'll say it so it's on the record, is that the legislature swept revenues from all of our tax sources, basically. So it's worse than it looks because that's what's funding McLeary, is the revenue that's getting swept and that's coming out of the pockets of cities and counties who are trying to provide those basic services. So that picture is really a lot worse than it looks. And that's part of the problem.
I think it's also important, and I was asked to speak up, so anyone can. When you look at what the legislature has done, not only have they scooped revenues, but they create opportunities for local municipalities to create municipal park districts, they keep on adding transportation district. So instead of addressing it as a state, they push it down to local level and then we make the difficult decision to approve these rates and opportunities to offset that structural deficit. And then our citizens are frustrated with us. And that's what we're elected to do. The common folk would say, you're raising our prices, you're going through the roof, not recognizing this connection. And you guys are tired of hearing me talk about this 1% problem, but our citizens need to understand the level of service that they demand has to match the revenue sources that we have available to us. And the mayor's idea about the municipal park district, those are the sorts of things where what you see is what you get. Do you want to pay for it? It's a good way to allow local choice. I'm normally an optimistic person, but I think the 1% getting increased, if in a matter of history, that used to be 6% that we could increase over a year and through an initiative process in, what, 2001? I can't remember. It's been a while.
Yeah.
It got changed and I don't see anybody with the courage in Olympia to change it now or ever. We're going to have to find a different way.
Yeah, I guess my thought on this is, I'm not tired of talking about it, I just feel like we do a lot of hand wringing and we just, it's kind of like we just have to deal with it. And so I think the opportunity we have is, and one question I would ask for maybe staff to bring back to the Budget Committee, is what are other revenue sources that are at our disposal? And what have we not maxed? And I mean, I know we have taxing and fee authority that we should probably be looking at, but the opportunity I think we have at the local level is to, in some ways, sort of retrench and say, all right, you guys aren't helping us in Olympia, we will ask you to help us, we'll continue to ask you, but we're going to act on our own best interest and we need to figure out what we need, what our citizens want to pay for and what they're willing to pay for it. And get rid of programs and services that are not being valued. And so, you know, again, I just, I, I agree with the mayor. There's just that likelihood that they're going to change that 1%. I mean, we just hold our breath until we're dead and that's just not going to happen. That's, we can ask them to do it, but it's not going to happen.
And actually
And we all know that.
That's right.
We wouldn't vote to change it either. You know, it was an overwhelming vote of the, the taxpayers in Washington State that, that voted in favor of this.
And to your point, I would just say the models that are being discussed are actually very different models altogether. It's like looking at some very different
Yeah, tax reform.
Yeah, tax
Right.
And we can weigh in on that. But in the meantime, I think we just have to kind of be like, we're Icelandic. We, we will take care of ourselves.
It's a great old mantra, isn't it?
That's right.
There you go. I think, I think council member Franklin and vice president truly both had comments to make, so.
I was just kind of following in line with Brenda there, so she has said it quite eloquently, so.
Great. Thank you.
Well, I agree with everything that's been said, but I also very much agree that regardless of if it's falling on deaf ears, that that advocacy and education needs to happen consistently. And that I believe that even those types of small acts can change what people do in Olympia and can change how people will vote on something. They just need to know the information. And so that education of our legislatures and, and of our voters, of how this really constrains the city and our ability to provide the services they need needs to be continued. So it's, I don't feel that's wasted effort ever.
Well, well said. I completely agree because I think that a lot of the times these things get voted for and people just don't really understand the unintended consequences. And so it's a little like the public records. We have to keep clearly articulating what the impacts of these sorts of flaws are. And I don't think we should give up. I
Yeah, and I agree with that.
And I don't think you're saying give up.
Move forward.
I also don't, I'm also not optimistic, but anyway.
I'm more optimistic.
But there was a
Change the world.
There was an action step suggested here, right?
Yes. What I heard was what, what are the other potential revenue sources vis a vis this 1% limitation that we might look at as a city? That's what I
Yeah, and even if they're targeted, like you can do this, like, like the municipal parks district, yeah. Leavies and what, what do we, what can we levy? I don't even know.
I mean, there's also, when you, when you make that 1% evident and understood as leverage, okay, you won't do this, then raise the EMS cap from 50 cents to 75 cents. And act as, give us more tools locally. If they're not going to address it, we need more local control of what we can levy, what we can ask our citizens to do.
I just, yeah, I just, you know, as important as, as it is to try to leverage and get as much revenue, but we also have to always be internally getting as efficient as we can throughout the city in all of our processes. So I don't want us to think we're satisfied that. It's an ongoing issue with every, every business.
Never satisfied.
Can I make a comment? You know, we talked about efficiency amongst city operations and we're always striving for that. But what I, what I fear will happen is that it gets used as sort of a scapegoat where you can only get so efficient and then pretty soon you just don't have enough staff. And it would get so thin that we start doing things badly. And so I, I guess I'm just, I'm really cautious about having staff.
I'm just saying the way we do business
Sure. No, and actually we need to stay up to date by staff.
It's sort of a continuous improvement process. And one thing that we found after cutting 17 million into the district is you should have significantly prioritized what's essential. And through a recession, the best outcome is that your lead in need, and as long as you don't add back the same way you really decline, then that's thoughtful way that, that you avoid waste.
Right.
Well, I think it was already said, the service levels, and I apologize, Mayor, if you've said this, the service levels need to match the revenue. That's really the efficiency. That, you know, we really need to go to our constituents and say, here's what we can afford to do. What, what services do you want to maintain? And what services are we going to have to, to cut?
Yep.
So that we can do this within the revenue constraints that we have.
And I don't know if this fits here, but one, I think, opportunity that the city has is to use technology to get efficiencies in a lot of departments. You know, we can do more automated payments and processing. And I don't know what all the opportunities are. I know we have a new IT director.
We do.
And it may be that we have to make an investment in that. But in the long term, it allows us the attrition to reduce bodies or, you know, just be more efficient in the way that we deliver our services. And I, I'm interested in looking at those opportunities. I think other cities are doing a lot better job of leveraging technology to help them deliver services.
And council member, just to remind you that as, as you passed the 2016 budget, we did add the two additional IT FTEs. It, it just, just in recognition of what you're talking about. You know, there's a lot of opportunities there. Technology's changing all the time. The more we can do, the better off we are. And I think that see them as the right way to do it.
The other thing that we're doing in the insurance department is we have somebody in there part-time. We talked about this several years ago, that is going back and looking at 100 years worth of records and putting that, transferring it from paper to electronic. So the public disclosure process will get better and easier. So yeah, we have something to do with that.
So there is some work going on around improving efficiencies, which is great. And, and the action item is to look at more opportunity for that. But, but more, the, the initial action item was to look for funds in new places.
Revenue opportunities.
How does that happen? Is that internal staff work, bringing it back to the council? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
It's feeling like we're drawing to a close around this topic. Are there any final comments before we move on? Okay. We're doing really well on timing. This is good. Need to learn another break. Let's move on and, and do a check-in about the procedures. You had, they were updated in the fall of 2015. And really what, what we'd like to focus on in the discussion is, is how, how are those updates working? How are council procedures working? How's the subcommittee structure working? And we've had some comment already about this, this sort of administrative versus legislative roles and, you know, managing operations versus the policy level. So let's break that one out and come back to that. And let's start with, how are the, how's the procedure update working? The council procedures and subcommittee structure. What's your sense on that? Cut that for a wide open question, folks. Start anywhere.
I, I think people are, are, you know, I'm new, right? So this is the only council procedures that I know. But, but I, I think that folks are still getting used to it. I, to me, I, it just in, in the last few months of observing and then also now participating, it still feels very stiff and it feels like we can't get enough done in those subcommittees. That, that there's so much information coming that we can't really dig in and discuss. Like this feels a lot easier to have a conversation. And this, to me, it seems to do work, to work effectively together and make good decisions. We need to have more conversations and a lot less presentations. And that's also the way my brain works. So it helps when we're, when we're, when we're talking and digging into things. And so I'm not quite sure how we can do that effectively. I know it's hard because everything is in the, in the public eye and, and, and it needs to be and it should be. But we do need to be able to have frank conversations and dig into topics that disagree and, and really understand an issue. So.
Yep. Okay.
We've been at it for four months in terms of change process with, with the subcommittee. My observation is that to the extent it was intended to maybe more clearly define the role of the policy and legislative work from administration, I think it's done that. I think there are probably places and ways to improve it, but I think it's done that. To the extent that it was intended to add time so that we could expand, literally expand our capacity or bandwidth to simply deal with issues, I think it's done that.
Great.
I think probably in this discussion earlier, I think indicates there's probably need to even do more of that. But, you know, I do think that's worked. I, I, I want to say, and Ray, I, I know this wasn't your first agenda, you know, but you've embraced this. And, and I think the administration's done a great job. I'm really excited about, you know, folks are, are working together on things and we're trying to get into things. It's not always easy and topics, it's not going to be. But I think there's been a real commitment on the part of the council and administration to try to get at this and make it work. And my hat's off to everybody. Now, probably areas we can improve, but I do think we're going to have to expand time and capacity.
Okay. Yes.
I would, I, I echo what's been said. I do think, Cassie, to your point, I agree. It's very easy in these subcommittees to start getting mired down in the detail. And there's some of that that needs to happen. But I do think, and this is part of why I think this is on this agenda, is this whole administrative versus legislative discussion. Because I think it's really important for these subcommittees to be very clear about what is a policy type issue or item versus what is a operational administrative type item. And if, if we in the subcommittees get too far into the domain of the mayor and his staff and the operations, then I think we're, we're not going to be able to stay kind of up at that higher policy level. So I just think that's really critical and, and, you know, it has only been a few months. And so we're working through how this should play out. But I think that if we keep that point kind of at top of mind when we're in these subcommittee meetings, I think that will really help. I observed
Have we seen that happening? I'm just curious. Have you seen that?
Well, I have seen a little bit of that. I was just going to say, I was, I missed part of that last public safety meeting, but I did arrive before it finished and I thought you did a very nice job, Brenda, of trying to reframe some of that discussion in a policy perspective. And that needs to be made clear, not only to all of us, but to the citizens and the people that are participating. Because it's not our place to start micromanaging the mayor's staff or the decisions that they've made from an operational standpoint. And so if we just keep that kind of as one of our guiding principles in these subcommittee meetings and in general, I think that will dramatically help us to get through and get more accomplished. So.
You know, I would say, I, I haven't, I haven't felt that. I have, you know, at, at the end of the day, I think all of us as electors, we want to describe, we want to be clear in an agreement as to what the outcome is that we expect. The how to get there really becomes very much an administrative function. And the interesting thing about just dealing with the public safety issue, and I want to say this at a high level, is what, what wasn't forthcoming is that a lot of what was being described has been settled in arbitration. There were very much ongoing labor issues. And, and so there's a whole side of this that we really need to be thoughtful about. I mean, I think to your point, one misstep, one commitment, and all of a sudden, you know, two and a half years in arbitration and, and winning a million dollar arbitration is out the window. And that's, that's where, and I don't sense, I mean, I, I clearly got that you all were saying, there's a limit here. I mean, you can make the ask and we'll pass it on the administration and they'll look at what you're proposing. But we're not in, we're not in that position that we're going to make an operational decision. We just don't go there. And that's, that's the check and balance. I think that's, it's there. You guys get it. And so I, I think we just need to make sure we, you know, follow that path.
And I think it's good in those committee meetings to make sure that that's stated. You know, I think I brought up that we have nothing to do with the unions. And Brenda and Jeff both had, you know, the, the upper level administrative task of what we were doing. Not administrative, but, you know, strategic staff tasks and looking at the pitch study and evaluating their recommendations and just getting input for the recommendations. So I will just continue to make sure that at all the meetings, that we let everything go from beginning and throughout our, throughout our role.
Yep. Communicating, that's often a challenge. Council member Bader.
So I had the fortune or misfortune of being council chair when a lot of these procedures changed. So just a, a few things to throw out there, things I think we might want to think about tweaking. One, I know, I know Deb experienced some challenges as we delayed the election of the council chair to the beginning of the new year. So I think at some point maybe we need to ask Deb how, what those challenges were and how we could better deal with those for, because I think the administrative handover from one council president to the next. Anyhow, just need some, might need to do some work there. One thing that came up early, but I haven't heard a lot of comments about it recently, was the fact that we didn't allow public comment at the subcommittee meetings. And I, you know, I, I don't know that's a good thing or a bad thing. And I know there were some initial comments about that. You know, there, there's other opportunities to make public comment, including immediately, I mean, our, the way our subcommittee meetings work is they occur immediately before a council. So I think, so I still think there's at least a near term opportunity to make public comment. But I did want to remind us of the appearance of comments about, about the fact that we didn't allow public comment at the committee, subcommittee meetings. And another phenomenon I've noticed, and the rest of you can correct me, because I'm not able to come to anything but the general government committee meeting just because I'm working in Seattle. But it, it seems to me that a lot of us are, I don't know if I say this sadly, but we're showing up at the subcommittee meetings that we're not on. And I'm just wondering if that's the case, are there topics really that should be being addressed to the whole council? If there's, if, if we're showing up anyway, I mean, if the rest of you are there, is that a, a sign or really it's something that needs to be, be being briefed to the whole council anyway? I think, I was certainly sympathetic and agreed with Councilman Roberts when he brought this idea forward because of the bandwidth situation, you know, council meetings, we weren't, the regular council meetings, we just weren't, either couldn't have or weren't having the bandwidth, the time to discuss these. Like, I think most of us felt we should. And so, but, but I'm wondering, gosh, in doing that, did we inadvertently just set up another meeting where we're all going to be at anyway? So just throwing that out there to think about. And also making sure that, that we don't stray from the topic or the issue or the brief, I guess, the council president or the council's whole assigned to the subcommittee that we make sure we keep, as we go forward, we keep within that brief. And I know I didn't necessarily make clear what, all the time, what the topic was going forward that we should, that the council subcommittee was supposed to talk about. So maybe that's one thing going forward, that very clearly defined what topic is that is being assigned to that council subcommittee. Especially a lot of them can overlap and certainly budget finance touches on so many things. What, what could that be? And then a very minor one, and Council, Brenda reminded me that initially I had assigned council, the subcommittee chairs that were supposed to be elected. And so my apologies for not following that procedure. And, you know, so just a reminder that I think we need to elect our subcommittee chairs here in the, in the near future. So anyhow, just want to throw out some things. I, I've kind of been keeping a, a list of things as the last four months went along that I think might, we might want to tweaking or working with for those revised council procedures.
Great. Comments, responses, ideas? Great, comments, responses, ideas?
You, you bring up a lot of great points, and I know I, I attend a lot of the, you know, I, I always am sitting in the audience at the public safety, for example, because it's a, an issue that I'm passionate about, and, and I, it overlaps with the Streets Initiative work, which I'm also pre and now that I'm on the council, I'm heavily involved with. So I think that there's, it's hard, you know, I, I think that, that the subcommittees are necessary to be able to dig into this, but it's also hard for me, honestly, sitting in the audience, because I actually want to weigh in. I, I'm, I'm sitting there probably just like our citizens, going, wait, I, I'd like to engage in this part of the conversation. And, and so there, it is, there is overlap between the, the committee's work, you know, public safety and general governance, there's some overlap there, and finance overlaps everything, right? You know, so, so it, it's challenging, but I think we can, we can work within it. But what I'd like to see is, 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 is more of that discussion, and, and I, and I don't know how to get there. I just, I, it's, it's something I feel like we're not, we're not, I, I appreciate what you've said, Scott, you know, that is so important that we stay focused on our role and we don't get into the weeds. It's so easy to get into the weeds, I see this in, in our organization all the time when you're dealing with, with administration versus more strategic decisions, and it, and it's hard. We can all hold ourselves accountable to that and maybe, you know, go, ooh, hey, that sounds like we're getting off track. But I just, I don't know if it's that we don't have enough time on the subcommittees, or if maybe they're, you know, we can have longer subcommittee meetings and less frequent, or what that looks like, or it's, or if it's that general direction and guidance for the president and the subcommittee chair, this is what we're dealing with. We're not going to deal with everything around public safety or everything that we need to deal with in, in finance, but we're going to deal with this particular topic.
Okay, Brenda, and then Paul.
Well, I have had some thoughts about this too, because I agree. What I am seeing is that we're dealing with the committees the same, in the same way we deal with our council meetings, which is we get information and then we process that. In education, there is a new way of educating, it's called a flipped classroom. And the idea is that students get all the information in advance, so they, they watch videos, they get all the information about, you know, the new math topic in advance, and they go home and they struggle through it, and then they bring their questions to the classroom. And they spend the entire classroom time just talking and answering questions and discussing the information that has already been digested. And what, I'm a molar, so it's, this works really well for me, because I'm the person who likes to mull things over. I can't really react very quickly. So what I think would be helpful, and maybe would open up more conversation, is if we got the briefing in a written format in advance, or whatever information is coming from whoever's going to be at the committee meeting in advance, a week before, or even a few days before. So we have an opportunity to read it, think about it, formulate our questions, and then when we go to the committee meeting, we have more opportunity, rather than just getting that, that information presented to us, we have an opportunity to ask the questions about the information that we now have a chance to do our homework on. That's one thing. The second thing that I want to bring up, and I'm not exactly sure where this belongs, but I have noticed over the past few years, a proliferation of materials presented at council meetings where we're shown graphs and charts, but there's no source of the data on there. Not that you don't, you know, under, you know, you don't trust the information, but it can make a difference if you know where that information's coming from. You know, with the Fitch study, they made a presentation where there was no source data posted on any of the slides. We've had presentations from staff and from last week, the union. There were no, there's no source data on this information, and so it's hard to know how to take it. I mean, if that source of information is the National Enquirer, you kind of know how to, you know, to deal with that versus if it's coming from the New York Times or Washington Post or the Wall Street Journal. So I would appreciate if chairs or whoever's in charge of coordinating all that really looks and, and lets whoever's coming to make a presentation know that the council wants to see the source of the information, just so we know where we're getting the data from. It'd be very easy for us to interpret things that, you know, either have strong source data or don't. And as far as comments at committee meetings, I'm not seeing that we have enough time to do that the way we currently have it structured. In the past, we certainly didn't have comments, public comment at committee meetings. They were open to the public, although the public didn't know that much about them.
That would take the whole meeting, you would just, you would just listen to it.
And as for me, I'm not going to committee meetings that I don't belong to. I trust whoever's on there is taking care of things, and if I wanted to see it, I could watch it on, online, presumably. Is that correct?
I, I trust the committees. It, it's more just out of interest and wanting to engage in and caring a lot about it. I absolutely trust everyone on this council.
I didn't, I didn't hear it was a trust issue at all.
No, no. Are, are those being taped though? That's the one that I, that's right.
So, so Mayor Stephenson, and then I'm going to come back to you.
So the one thing that would help, and I, I know we're in a learning curve with committees, staff oftentimes doesn't really have a clear understanding of what the committee or committee chair wants. So if, if you want, I, I think we just need whoever the committee chair to spend time with Deborah so we can prepare and get that information out to you, and you tell us whether you want it a week in advance so we, then we can schedule the subcommittee at the appropriate time. That would be helpful, and, and it's not a matter of, you know, not talking with staff, it's just a matter that if we, if it goes through Deborah, then we can get, we know what you're asking for, and we can get that information and get it out to you in advance. So I think that that piece would help.
That's great, thank you. Councilmember Roberts.
Well, it's a good discussion. So let me just go back and say that in preparing the draft of the procedures that was ultimately passed, I looked at the 20 largest cities. Now, I didn't go in great detail in every one of those cities, but I did drill down on several. For example, the city of Bellevue, which has a city manager form of government, operates almost entirely as a committee of the whole, and they probably spend two to three times the amount of hours that we spent, as an example. And there are, so, I, what, what each one of the examples showed me though was that every other city was spending more time doing what they were doing than we were spending in terms of policy. And we've talked about that on every topic we've covered today, has gotten, it's somewhere in the, the element of needing to put more time in has come up. So as we look going forward, I, I really think the first four months has been a success, but it's four months, and, you know, we're, can we improve? Oh, heck yes, we know we can. So where? And I would think that we do need to spend more time. I think that the mayor is quite correct. The more we can be clear about what we're trying to do, the better I think the outcomes will be. I think there are several models that we have. One is committee of the whole, which operates on the regular scheduled meeting. One of them is subcommittees and their charge, as they have been. I, I don't think we've ever got a subcommittee meeting that did have clear, loose charge, even though it may, we may prove some communications on it, but it was clear charge. Another is a subcommittee of the whole that has, that has expanded. But in each case, in other words, you can, can start a meeting at five o'clock instead of at 6:30, and it doesn't have to have every member of the council, but it can be a committee that's going to discuss something that, that we know is going to be broader than a three-member subcommittee. I mean, there, there are different pieces here that we can play with, and they're all at our disposal within the front procedures we have now. So I do think those are examples. I, I think that, and I, and this is not to argue the mayor's point, because I think he's absolutely right, the more we can be clear, the better. But I think a couple of examples that are, that tell us where we're doing things well, and they could also do things better. In the case of the General Government Committee, where we've talked about the housing pieces, I think we've had some pretty clear understandings of where to go, and I think, frankly, I think we've kind of done what we can do right there for right now. And there may be some other things coming, or land use procedures and some other things, so. But I think we've tried to step up and say, let's go, and, and do that. In the case of the Public Safety Committee, and I know we'll come back to Fitch, but I think there've been some challenges there, and I don't know that that's been the subcommittee issue. I think the chair has asked us to respond to things, take a look at the study and give me some input kind of things, and I know in, in looking at that, I, I know I've expressed some concerns, but I think it means that we've all got to do the work that we have to do and put some comments forward. So there, there are some issues here that I think we can improve upon, but I don't think we can do it without any more time. I think that's just the bottom line.
Great. Yeah, we've heard that from several people around the table. Do others want to weigh in on this anymore?
I just have one comment.
Go ahead.
It gets to this point about the other council members needing to feel like, whether they need to attend or not. I've tried to attend most of them, mostly because I sort of, I want to make sure I understand what's happening before it comes to us later on. But I do think something I would feel better about missing those if, if there was a really good, you know, I'm not saying it's a 10-minute report, but maybe a, you know, two or three-minute report, bullet points or what have you that the chairs would put forward, so that the rest of us don't feel like we have to come to hear all of that. So that might be a, an improvement that we could do. We have minutes, but I, I guess what I'm talking about would be, and I, I realize that, you know, the meetings happen and then we go right into the council, so, you know, sometimes that's hard to gather your thoughts that quickly, but that would be an opportunity to say, okay, here's what we talked about, there's three or four key bullet points. Deb?
And I also want to point out that not only are we taking the minutes, but we're also attaching them online, so you can actually go back online. Not only are the chairs handing out the minutes and they going in and doing their recap of their committee meetings, but then once the chair approves them, we're actually posting online with the agenda, so you can actually go back and see those too, and the public, of course, can open them up and see them. The, the other thing that you guys were saying was in regards to, you would like to have departments or presenters. A recent chair and also administration dealt really strongly trying to get that material ahead of time. What do you do if you, if they're just not going to give it to you? What happens when your meeting starts is a question that you guys will want to look at. Will you allow it if they just show up with it, or what are you going to do going forward?
Great point. Back to your earlier point, Deb, I agree, the combination of the minutes plus some bullet points verbally from the dais, from the chair, would, I think, give enough information that people wouldn't feel like they have to come to all those. To your other point, I mean, actually, it's, it's one of those things, as the chair, if somebody doesn't, if somebody's coming forward, they didn't provide their information in advance, I guess the meeting could be postponed or rescheduled.
At least that, that for the president.
But we, and we should know that, if we ask for it, you know, three days in advance, if we don't have it, sorry, send out an email, the meeting's been postponed another week or two weeks or whenever it needs to be rescheduled. Because we've had a couple of cases where information has not been provided in advance at all. You literally get it when you're sitting there, and I just don't think that's really, A, productive, and B, fair to the committee members, so.
I would agree with that. I think that the committee chair is responsible for saying, you know, this isn't, this just isn't the way we're going to do business. We need, everyone has to have an opportunity to read it and see what, what you're presenting, so.
Okay, so-
I would also say it's important that, you know, and I'm new, so maybe there is this understanding, but I, I, I would be curious if every chair and, and if it's the chair and the president that need to have this understanding of what, what, what the committee is tasked with doing. What is the, what is, what is this committee working right now? And, and making sure that that clarity is there. As a new person that was appointed to the governance, general governance, I'm like, well, what does the general, you know, I, I had to dig in, like, what, what's, what's our mission here? What are, what are we supposed to be working on? And so I think that kind of, you know, just a, a vision statement or goals for the coming year for each committee somehow in, in writing, or, or, or that we all are kind of agreed this is the work of that committee right now, would help other council members also understand what's happening, even if you're not attending or watching, but also newly-elected council members start to understand the work that's ahead, and, and the chairs can, can then also feel like they're working in alignment and whatnot, so.
Okay.
And I guess I would, Deborah?
I, I would just like to add on that that would really help staff tremendously. And I'll give you just a concrete example. So what we're working on right now is the first budget amendment of 2016. And so now staff is really struggling, does this need to go to budget committee before we actually take it to council, or is this just normal, everyday business? We can just take it to the, you know, the council as a whole? And so it would be very, very useful to know exactly what it is that we need to do so that we're making all the right steps.
Okay.
Yeah, great, and I, I would say just specifically to that example, that's an example where probably the chair of the, either the president or the chair of the budget committee, I have to think through that, should look at that and say, is this just routine stuff?
Yes.
I mean, we don't want to schedule a budget subcommittee meeting for routine information that just needs to come forward and be reviewed and approved.
Thank you.
On the other hand, if it's complicated, or it's something new, or it's large or significant, et cetera, then probably it should go-
Understood.
-to the budget committee.
Technically, the president has the ability to put something on a, on a committee agenda, so I think that would be a discussion with you.
Okay, so.
However, you know, I, I think about, apparently I was the chair of the budget committee, but now I need to be elected, so what's it called?
You still can't get out of it.
I mean, I'm, I'm always focused on co-creating agendas with the administration that makes sense, and in our four months of learning curves, I think we all recognize doing a presentation at, at the committee and then doing it again at the council is redundant. And so those sorts of decisions, not to time a decision or a presentation at the council maybe in the first place, and then collecting feedback and going back and having a deeper understanding afterwards. Timing kind of comes into play as well. I was thinking in terms of what Paul was saying, is if there is no, I don't think there's a barrier to having a committee meeting related to something like public safety, that you just have the entire council attend at five o'clock, and it's a precursor meeting, there's probably no barrier for that, because there is certain topics that, that we do need to all hear about, and there's some that not. In terms of what's on agenda or not, it's somewhat like what the council president's role is to decide whether it's on council briefing, whether it's on action, or whether it's on consent agenda. That, I think the budget chair should work with the administration, check with the president, but not to dump all the work on the president, but maybe we can get to work through that. So I think there's just a lot of opportunity. We talked about, I mean, there's, there is part of the subcommittee where you're talking about the operational, operational aspects, where the discussion is about the deeper understanding and it's not about action. And there may be seldom opportunities where you're going to really deal with a heavy policy issue. And at that point, a heavy policy issue, you can set the stage for it and have it occur broader in council. For example, Councilmember Murphy and Scott and I talked the other day about, you know, personally, I don't think it's the role of, of the Public Safety Committee to make a policy recommendation around level of service. That is a heavy, heavy topic that needs all seven of us to have good thinking, and you have to tie it to resources. How you going to do it, what you going to do? So from my perspective, there's certain policy decisions that the committee has to just say, we're going to take this up, and we're going to get the best minds that we have that have been elected to look at it. So there's just, four months in, I think we need to, just to continue to improve and be efficient and know when a meeting may occur or not. So with the budget committee, it's a little more predictable. There is an annual process, and I would intend to make a work plan, or here's when we want to meet and here's when we don't need to meet. And if you have anything else on there that you have questions on, we'll dig into it.
So given multiple comments about needing more time to talk about issues, I'm reluctant to move you forward, but I'm going to, I'm going to shift us a little bit and cut the time on this topic. Let me reframe what I think I've heard at a, at a pretty general level, if I might. The mayor started us off by talking about the fact that there is a learning curve here that, that we all, you all need to go through, and that's expected, so keep that in mind. But there are concerns with both time, the amount of time that is spent or that you are able to spend in deep discussion on issues, as well as the timing of when discussions occur, whether that's committee meeting timing or, or whether the discussions- occur, whether that's committee meeting timing, or whether the discussions occur in council meetings or in committees. There was a concern that you want to know, or that it would be much more helpful if you knew where the data you're looking at is coming from, because it gives you a better sense of how reliable that data might be. That there's a need on both the part of city staff and council members to be very clear about who needs what from whom, and to be fairly specific, particularly on the part of council members, when you're asking for reports or data, so that staff doesn't have to do this much work to deliver this much that you're looking for. And some of the other pieces are fairly tactical, and you will remember them, we'll have them in the minutes, but things like, you know, giving a quick verbal report from coming out of a committee meeting at the start of a council meeting, so that folks know at least what the topic of discussion was, and so forth. Those are some of the things that I'm hearing. And I know we've captured the rest in the notes, and we'll get those back to you. But in general, what I'm hearing is that the process seems to be working fairly well, that there are tweaks that have to be made, and that you want to keep refining the process to improve the outcomes. We also had a little bit of conversation, and it's threaded through everything we've done so far today, around this sort of managing the city, the administrative side, and the policymaking or legislative side of the challenges that each of you face. Are you comfortable that you, that you've spent enough time and will spend enough time on that at this point? I mean, I'm seeing lots of agreement in the room when the sentence comes up. Anything else you want to say about that, Mayor?
Mayor is going to always be in our form of government a natural tension. And I'm going to push back on you, you're going to push back on me, saying, you know, that's not a policy matter, that's not, you know, you're getting a legislate, and that's healthy. I don't, I don't have an issue with that at all. As I think about, if I could just shift for a minute.
Yes.
There is nothing that, you know, and I'll say this, you'll probably all go cross-eyed because, you know, we all value our time, and, you know, I know you guys are spending 50, 60 hours of your day job and then doing this, so always be respectful of that. But my sense is, on big issues, big policy issues, there's nothing that would prevent us, prevent the city council president from calling a special meeting, to deal with one issue, one large policy issue. Wouldn't have to be a retreat, but it would say, okay, if the subcommittee's reported out, the administration has a recommendation, let's, let's meet and talk about that and provide direction.
Okay, thank you. There's another item under procedures that's focused on public disclosure meetings and communication. Can someone remind us what that's about, what the concern is there?
Well, I had a conversation, and I think Brenda was with me, with the gal who does the public disclosure for the county, and she had a conversation with us about cellphone use and city cell phones, and how important that piece was, and I know that council doesn't have city phones. And so as we started talking, I mean, that is such a way that our citizens communicate with a lot of us, and some of us, I don't know about everybody, but, or could, anyway, that that was a conversation. She was very concerned that the council sees the procedure.
Say, I'm not totally dragged, but you should have, or should you?
Yes, we should. Use city cellphone for all the city.
Is this a Hillary Clinton thing?
No. No. Could be.
No, you're, you're, you're cellphone subject to the public information. So any text you have, non-voice conversations.
Well, I think one, one of them.
So we do one at a time.
I was just training on this. I was like, Tim knows.
Yeah, we'd be happy to have Randy come do a refresher on that. I think he said you had a memo, and he's suffered, Cassie had the pleasure of speaking with her, but we'd be happy to spend a lot of time on that. That is important.
Yeah. But we, but we can use our, our own cellphone, we just are subject to sharing those.
Correct, to the extent that you use them, yes. And Ramsey has some suggestions that I have to avoid.
Okay. Deb?
And I also want to remind, and actually it would be for Cassie's benefit, but I try to remind new council members coming in, that the council does offer to purchase a city cellphone for you. It is one of the tools that's being provided, and it's up to the individual council member to say if they want to use a city cellphone or a personal phone, because of the fact that if they use the city cellphone, the same thing, they get their phone bill, and they go through and they identify all of their calls, and then they pay for their calls at 20 cents a minute for anything that is not city-related. But it is one of the benefits that's offered to each of the council members coming in.
Okay.
I just want to add, I think that we would benefit from a joint training from Ramsey as a group, because I think that everyone has a, probably a little bit different understanding of this, and I think if we could all have, share an understanding, it would be very helpful for us as a council.
Well, didn't the State Supreme Court make a recent ruling regarding the mayor's candidacy prosecutor? So don't use, probably Cassie later to put it over the rest of us.
Yeah.
Okay. Brenda?
Well, two things. In the old, in the old days, you could give a city cellphone, so if anybody wants one, it sounds like that's still available. But you can't make personal calls on it, or you have to reimburse the city, and then that's all a public document. So I think the math that a lot of people, then including myself, was do I want to carry around two cellphones? But the other thing about public disclosure that I think would be helpful is, for me anyway, I have a system where I organize my email that I receive, but I, it is suboptimal, I'm sure. And I'm aware that there are some software programs that are available that help legislators organize their email. I don't know if there's searchable programs or what, but, you know, like, I organize my things by topic, and then when we get a public disclosure request, I got to go comb through all sorts of different folders and things. But I would be interested in doing some research on whether there is another email, you know, an alternative to Outlook that is more tailored to the public disclosure process, where I don't know exactly how it works, but I know there are a couple of products out there.
And I actually, Steve Hilyer has brought up looking at different ways because of contact with Ramsey on the thing. So that is a work in progress that administration is already doing at this time.
I don't know if that's a council as a whole, general government committee, or, but that is something that would be helpful, I think, particularly as we've had more of these public disclosures. And, you know, it just takes hours to go through my emails, email folders, just to make sure I'm not missing anything, so that would be my.
So getting a refresher on the rules around public disclosure, but also doing some research to find out if there is a better way to manage email and voice.
We have one, the District of Arts Money, so it's a budget, it's a budget on it. But I was going to mention that I think the update should include the news and don'ts of the committees. We had a conversation about the three of us meeting with the administration, and, you know, it may be an area of greatness that us or public would expect us to have a subcommittee meeting outside of the public venue, and so some guidance for that.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
And I'm not an expert by any means on IT. However, I do believe that if we get a public disclosure request, and it's asking for something specific, I believe that IT can actually do a sweep of the entire email system and actually pull that out.
They are doing that.
And so I don't know that you have to be so meticulous about, you're trying to find...
You put in Fitch work.
So bring this stop. Just let I stop.
Okay. So I want to give you five minutes to stand up and stretch. I know you need that. And then we have two more items, or actually more than two items, but two more agenda items to deal with.